Interrupt.
I'm.
We'll tape some silence here.
Okay.
Watching the clock.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, Diane.
We're just waiting for six o'clock and that will start us off.
Okay.
All right, I have six o'clock, so gonna call the meeting to order and Diane, could you just run down who's on, please?
Yep, we have Tricia Childs, Chief Stewart, Pete, Tina, yourself, Chief Alcindino, Jack Kozak, uh, Larry, Nancy, Carrie, and myself.
Mike Stewart.
All right, welcome, welcome, everybody, and, uh, Trish, could you start us off as usual, please?
I will, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I've got, uh, three calls to report on, and I- I've tried to, again, consolidate to make it easy, so I'm not repeating, like, you don't need to know the cases yesterday and the cases today, so I'm gonna just tell you, like, the cases and how, um, it- whether it's increased or decreased the last time we spoke. So, the first one, that's kind of an important call, is the legal call on yesterday. Um, so obviously, people are listening to the governor, and they're very concerned about the reopening, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna handle this? Uh, so, I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna tell you the a- the questions and the answers. So, the first person said, "Is there a mechanism to adjust the budget to account for expenditures due to the emergency orders?" And the answer is yes. And, of course, the selectmen, this is important for you guys, you can adjust the amounts in various departments and move it where you have to. So, the question was, I think this was a police chief, and he said, "If I exceed my budget, how can I- how can we adjust for that?" And they said, "You can, say it's police or fire, or whatever department needs it." The selectmen can accept grant money or any money within this fiscal year as it comes in. And in most instances, you- you can do it via a virtual meeting and just say that you can change a budget, a person's budget, you can take money from one account and- or one department, I should say, and put it into the other department. And to get clarification on this, for those of you that, you know, wanna check it out, they said this is in RSA 31:95-VI. And then there was another question, you've probably heard it the last couple of days, about the KN95 masks, and that CDC says they're not equal to the N95 masks. And this is true. Um, there is a process and so- there's misinformation out there. Both the police chief and the fire chief realize this. Uh, unfortunately, we're seeing it on the news with Massachusetts, so I guess we're ahead of them, which is really cool. Um, but they're saying that the research has shown that the KN designation, and I think you may have heard me repeat this, is not equivalent with the N95, meaning that with this designation, KN, there is a leak factor, and therefore, it does not meet the qualifications to be equivalent with the N95 masks. They also said, "If you're seeing complaints about false advertisement," they were- and probably both chiefs should realize this, and Larry, that if you're seeing, if you're getting, um, some kind of advertisement via an email or a phone call, that they've got the KN and they're saying they're equivalent, they really would like us to go to the Consumer Protection Bureau at the AG's office. So, let me know, and I can file, um, the appropriate information so that this can start. There was another question about can we require staff, um, to get the COVID-19 individual testing before returning to work when it becomes available? And their answer is, having an employee to commit to a COVID-19 test before coming to work would most likely not be appropriate unless the worker has actually been out on a medical leave suspected of COVID. Um, you obviously can ask about symptoms and then respond appropriately, and I'm gonna cover this a little bit more later on in- in, um, today's call. There was also a question about can we require staff, say, in our municipal buildings to wear masks? And the answer is yes. You can require staff to wear masks, and this is gonna be expanded on a little bit later. Um, there was another question, can we require a visitor to wear masks within our municipal building? And the answer is yes. There is no reason why you can't, um, require a visitor to wear a mask as a policy. However, if someone has a medical reason why they could not wear a mask, you must have guidelines in place and be prepared to deal with this. And again, I'm gonna expand on this on today's call, which hopefully you'll find helpful. There was another question, if individuals are disobeying social distancing guidelines, can we get the poor police involved? And the answer is, if people are not adhering to requirements, those policies can be enforced and become more of an administrative question. What they did say, and- and I'll explain where the excessive conversation about this particular one. So, if town hall opened, let's say, and people are coming in and not staying six feet apart, they're saying, "We can call the police." However, in order for the police to do their job and- and feel that they're not violating anybody's rights, we need to post a notice about the rules of the violations outside the building and on the website. So, we can't let them come in and then have a notice there that says, "Oh, you have to wear a mask and stand six feet apart." It's gotta be outside the building so people are prepared. And then they said, they expanded on that and said, "You could call the police." But the sense is, in the first instance, the police should look at it as a civil issue. So, again, I'm gonna expand on this a little bit more, 'cause it got pretty heated later on. Uh, there was another question, can libraries require their employees to do a screening before coming to work? And the answer is, you can do a temperature screening for employees during the pandemic, but it must be reasonably done and not frequently. Primex actually weighed in and said they would want to see what was being asked and how the process was working if this was the case. And Primex actually said they would help put some kind of a policy in place. What they- and a lot of the conversation, you know, I- I didn't type it all, but a lot of the conversation was, "It has to be reasonable." So, if somebody, say, comes into the town hall or the library to put a, I don't know, an eight-hour shift, let's say, um, we can't just randomly go up to them and say, "Okay, we're gonna take your temperature." It's gotta be reasonable, and we really should have a policy. And again, I'll expand on that a little bit later. And then there was a question, here we go, Jack, about guidance on campgrounds. The answer is, and I- I have to tell you, yesterday's call on legal, so much of it was on campgrounds. And they said, "The answer is, as of now, they don't have any reason to expect any additional guidance from the governor about campgrounds." The governor said he will- he's willing to consider the current position on campgrounds, and it actually is now being talked about at the task force during the reopening meeting. And I know Charlie's listening to that, and I'm listening to that, and we'll keep you abreast. But right now, there's nothing that's gonna change on campgrounds. Now, the governor did say on, um, three o'clock on Friday, if everyone's available, I guess we should listen on channel, I think it's MUR, um, he's gonna talk about the phase reopening, the stay-at-home, and maybe campgrounds. But right now, nothing's changing. There was another town that said they had a village district in the town with their own government entity, and the residents are expressing concern they were not able to have their own village district meeting. It has been postponed and rescheduled for May 6th. Their question is, is there any indication that the orders will be extended beyond May 4th? As you know, our stay-at-home may expire on- on Monday. And the answer is, uh, the meeting is, uh, the answer is continuation of all of the emergency orders is under consideration, and that will affect naturally what goes on. They said, "Are there any enforcement of social distancing requirements that could be put in place for this particular meeting?" And the is- the meeting is supposed to take place in a room that would not provide adequate space for social distancing. Do they have the authority to screen this? And the answer is, the emergency orders, um, are in effect. And then the meeting can only occur physically if they imply- comply with the emergency order. If the emergency orders are continued, so let's say the governor extends it in some phase beyond Monday, then this particular town that is asking this has to have the same postponement issue that you had back in March when we were first dealing with this. And the moderator could postpone after consultation with the governing body, the EMD, and then they would need to postpone to another date and time and provide notice to residents. They said if the emergency orders aren't continued, then the EMD, working with the moderator, could establish rules for the meeting to require appropriate social distancing, and that would be part of the moderator's general authorities. And they also said, "If the moderator was not cooperative and did not wanna comply with social distancing, the EMD would have final say." There was another question about the governor's order on abatements of interest. The order was worded in terms of authorizing waivers, and is there ability to do this on a case-by-case basis? And their answer said, "If you were going to allow waivers, then it would have to be across-the-board waiver for all delinquencies that fall in the time period that the municipality decided to choose." If you decided to grant a waiver, it needs to apply to everything that fits- fits in the category of what the waiver is for. And then he followed up with another question and says, "What if the waiver doesn't fall under COVID-19?" And their answer is, it- this is correct, and it needs to apply to all interest penalties that were going to be applied for that time period. And the town- the tax collector ta- uh, tax collector and the Board of Selectmen needs to understand that it needs to be even across the board. There was another question, my goodness, this was amazing, I wish you all could listen to this. Matt, you would've appreciated this. Not to talk bad about attorneys, however, this was from an attorney. And- and my brother is an attorney, so I say that with fondness, okay? This was from an attorney in Nashua, and he said, "Didn't last week's emergency order have the effect of extending all previous executive orders to May 15th?" And the answer is, "Oh, you may be confusing the state of emergency with the stay-at-home order. This depends on what the governor does. He does not have to extend all the emergency orders. If facts justify, he can choose to extend- extend some, but not others." And then this attorney, I mean, this was amazing. What I'm telling you in a couple of, uh, sentences here was probably, uh, really fifteen minutes of this phone call. It actually got very heated. And the attorney then said, I try to believe you attorneys are like that. The attorney-
Never.
Then said, "Never, I know." Then said, "Section 2 states that all executive actions in the emergency orders and associated with it, shouldn't that mean that all emergency orders are extended according to this?" And their answer is, you gotta love this, Matt, the answer is, "We do not have the orders in front of us." But it sounds as though the emergency orders should- should extend through the end of the state emergency. Now, this is interesting, 'cause this went on in today's calls, too. And it- this attorney did a really good job on looking at the extension and then challenging it. It was quite interesting, you would've appreciated it. So, then there was another question, and actually, this was a local town to us, close to us, Sandown. And they said, "What is our ability to lay off or furlough library staff? Do we have the authority to do that?" And I think we've already- we already knew this, I think maybe early on, we may have discussed this. But their answer was, generally speaking, an employer can lay off or furlough staff, but there is a certain way to do it, and you have to stay consistent with the best human resource practices. The library trustees are an independent employment unit for the purpose of hiring, furloughing, or laying off employees. So, the select board could not step in as those funds are designated to the library. And then the same person asked another question and said, "Could the town determine what the cost savings would be and not provide that cost savings to the library?" And the answer is, the reality is, when the town meeting appropriates specific amount to the library, those amounts are provided to the library, so the entire amount appropriated at the town meeting is- it has to stay in force, and you can't extract from the library amount because you think you're gonna see a savings if you lay off those employees. So, the bottom line is, no, you can't do it, leave the library alone. So, Carrie would like to hear that, I'm sure. Okay.
Told you, Jack.
So, that's the legal call, but I have to tell you, it was a very heated call, and there's more stuff that's now gonna come out of that this week because of what was brought up during the call. So, now, I've got two more calls, so yet, uh, yesterday, earlier in the day, and then today at noon, um, and which was really quite interesting. So, the bottom line is, the State Emergency Operating Center is still serving at full activation level. The governor did announce, and you may have seen that on the news, that there's five new testing locations. Now, here's the part that I- Matt likes to listen, or everybody probably likes to listen to, but it talks about the people with COVID. What the governor wanted people to know is, and you've heard, uh, Chairman Matt talk about, you know, fourteen days and, you know, are we staying level, is there a downward swing? And the governor wanted us to know that even though you're gonna see more cases, it's because we're able to test more people. And he actually said today, "We are very close to meeting the fourteen-day downward swing." So, I wanted to start out with that, because unfortunately, I'm gonna tell you how we had increased cases. Um, so, the, um, we had five new testing locations announced by the governor, and at noon today, our count was 2,010 persons with positive COVID-19. But by four o'clock, in my call at four o'clock, that increased by 120 people. So, unfortunately, that's more, but again, keep in mind, we're testing more people. Recovered, we have 936 recovered, that's 47%. That's plus by 138 people. Deaths attributed to COVID is 60, that's 3%. However, by four o'clock this afternoon, unfortunately, we had added six to that, and it's due to some nursing home, long-term care facilities. So, that's too bad, so it's really 66 as of, like, four o'clock. Total current COVID cases are 1,014, that actually is down by 66. Um, persons who have been hospitalized for COVID is 249, that's about 12%. So, that's up by three. Current hospitalizations are 106, that's up by seven. Persons testing negative at selected laboratories is 18,736. That's up by 529 negative tests, so that's a good thing. Persons with specimens submitted to, um, New Hampshire Public Labs are 8,000, uh, sorry, yeah, 8,635, that's up 120, which is good, and because the labs are actually working better and faster and quicker. And persons with tests pending at the New Hampshire Labs is 81, that's down 142. So, we have less people waiting for results. Um, and as a side note, you know, in some of the previous calls, you heard that, you know, Rockingham was a hotspot, so I wanted to put it in perspective with you. So, as of this morning, we have 896 cases in Hillsborough County, 644 in Rockingham County, so clearly, we're not necessarily a hotspot. And only three in Newton, and I bring that up, 'cause I know on your TV screen, you're seeing one to nine. We have three. And again, there are some issues with the- the data that's coming in, and they're trying to fix it, but unfortunately, it's not accurate, so I wanted to bring that forward so that you understand. Yesterday, we completed our eighth public assistance briefing. We had 771 participants during the four days, so Larry, Kim, and I have been on this, and they're working with each one of us so that we can have a consistent message. And they're all about consistency. And I say this because, uh, obviously, Larry, Kim, and I have worked with this many times. So, we know what they expect. They are sending us, um, the normal documents that we usually have to have. Kim has uploaded them, I've uploaded them, Larry has made sure that they're all accord- they're current. Uh, so, we're really in a good place. Um, they did say that we have five new drive-through locations for testings, and they're actually open seven days a week. However, in order to go to the drive-through, and now anyone can go, this is not just first responders, you need to have an appoint- appointment made by, not, I should say this, you have to have an appointment, but your doctor has to want you to go there. So, don't think just because, you know, you wanna see if you have symptoms, you can get this appointment, you gotta be symptomatic. There was another question, uh, again, here we go, Jack, about campgrounds. And the question is, "Has there been any campground guidance? We're waiting and waiting, and we have more and more people on the weekends that are showing up." And the answer is, "The Attorney General's Office does not believe the governor will issue any new guidance. He intends to allow campgrounds to open with the current restrictions that are in place." They- he- they also said, "The reopening task force has had a presentation from the Campground Association, and Charlie and I are on these calls, and Larry, too, when he's not, you know, somewhere else on the call." But the governor says that right now, he feels there's not anything that's gonna change, but there is gonna be a governor briefing later this week, and he actually said today, "It's gonna be three o'clock on Friday, and he's now gonna give more information at that point." However, they did talk about, you know, best management practices for reopening. There was a lot of talk about this. And they said, um, and I can give this all to Diane or Nancy, you know, just in case we get to the point where we're talking about reopening, but some of the things that were talked about, they said, "If the employees are sick, they wanna make sure they understand we want them to stay home." They also said, "Health screening for your employees before they come to work." And it's something like questions that are answered, and they do this now in Concord. Ask questions like, "How do you feel? What's your temperature?" They're saying that we need to have a touchless thermometer, and you've heard me talk about it, Larry talk about it, and both chiefs talk about it. We've been ordering this for I don't know how long. But now, they're saying, "If you open your municipal buildings and you're gonna have a process in place about people coming back to work, we probably should have a touchless thermometer on hand." You need to ask them, "Do you have flu-like symptoms?" You have to ask, "Have you noticed a difference in taste or smell?" They said employers should have, and again, I'll give this to Diane, hand sanitizers available, mitigate exposure by requiring masks of employees and the public. They said, "Make sure we have touchless waste baskets." That we should emphasize employees to use only their own phones, so not, you know, if the phone's ringing and you happen to be near, I don't know, somebody's office, you answer the phone from there instead of from your own desk. They said, "We should have tissues available. We need to encourage hand washing." And have a workplace cleaning and disinfecting throughout the day, have a procedure in place. They talked about, well, you know, what if you have, you know, ten or twenty people in and out of the bathroom? How often does that have to be cleaned? And they basically said, "You gotta have a policy in place where it's done on a regular basis." They also said that you should develop an employee screening policy. And they ta- they talked about these particular questions, "How do you feel? Do you have a fever, blah, blah, blah?" They said, "We should have a plan in place for absences and allow employees to stay home if they don't feel good or if they have to take care of a family member." They said, "The HR should review all their policies and make sure now they've integrated into it what CDC, um, may suggest or Primex may suggest in dealing with a pandemic like we are." They said, "We should encourage cloth masks, this should be in our policy," and said, "To save the PPEs for our first responders." They said, "We should encourage six-foot distancing by marking floors and post signs outside the building." They said, "The public has the right to know before entering the building what you expect." They spent a lot of time on this. And then, so that was that section. Then the next question was, "Okay, has the stay-at-home order been extended?" And the answer is, you gotta love this, this is a politician. We will follow up with that clarification. I think it's gonna be talked about again on Friday. There was another question, "Is the task force on reopening looking at the seacoast? Online, it says the seacoast beaches and restaurants are closed. Is this correct?" And the answer is, "We will work with you, and Commissioner Stewart will look at the wording on the website and clarify it." So, clearly, there's gotta be an issue there. There was another question, "Are we doing antibody testing?" And the answer is, "No. We are not yet doing the antibody testing. All of the new testing centers are swab testing." There was another question on, "Is someone working on the guidance for towns that still have to have a town meeting?" And they said that New Hampshire Municipal Association has been handling these issues and will act- will work with any town that still has a town meeting as an issue. We also have, um, nineteen first responders that have tested positive. Fifty-nine are being tracked in quarantine. Eighteen members are in alternative housing. And ten alternative housing locations available, representing the increase by one, so they've added another one, um, for alternative housing in North Conway. They're also working on a security plan, because we've got a big shipment of PPEs arriving in Manchester, um, and they're gonna make sure that it gets to where it has to go. They're continuing an export and security mission for the PPE distribution statewide, because again, somehow, I don't know, it needs to go to the feds and send it to us. Today, Governor Chris Sununu issued emergency orders 37 and 38. Today, Governor Chris Sununu issued emergency orders thirty-seven and thirty-eight as part of the state's effort to respond to COVID-19. A quick, and you can look these up if you want to, or I can send them to you, emergency order thirty-seven is an order relative to the executive branch hiring out-of-state people and their travel. And emergency order number thirty-eight is temporary modification of school board and district statutory requirements. So unfortunately, it was a lot of information, you know, the calls were very long, but obviously if you need this, or Diane, you need this, I can get it to you. So it'll be interesting, if anyone has the time to watch the governor at three o'clock, you should. Also, every day, it was difficult today, I had two calls going on at three o'clock. If you want to listen to what's going on with the economic reopening task force meetings, you actually can listen yourself, and on Friday, they actually got to allow public questioning between nine and eleven. So if you're interested in that, let me know, and I'll give you the phone number and the PIN so you can log on to that. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Information is coming fast and furious.
It is.
I do, there's a couple of things that Trish went over there that were on my mind. First, first of all, and, and nobody really knows because it's a moving target, but I, I do think Friday's going to be a big day, and I think we're going to have a lot to talk about on Monday, as of, you know, the Friday information. And if I was a betting man, I think the, and obviously, we're our own board, we can vote the way we want, but I actually think the governor's going to set us up for his New Hampshire version of Phase One from the federal guidelines. So what, what we should keep in mind is the federal guidelines, their Phase One is, people who can work from home, still work from home. So I think for those who are working from home right now, we have to, you know, we have to be prepared that that's going to be the way it is for a while, and I think that'll be better for everybody. Additionally, if there's anybody else that can work from home, then I think they need to do what they need to do in order to get set up for that, and I think this board is supportive of that. And I do think, and I mentioned it last call, when, when that, I keep saying that door because I keep talking about Town Hall, but it's, it's really the library as well, but when those doors open, it's not going to be a miracle cure that this virus is gone. So when the doors open, we're going to have people walking in there, and there's still going to be a risk that needs to be mitigated. So Trish listed a bunch of stuff there. I believe, and I'm proposing it to the board right now, I think we should set a policy tonight, make it effective on Monday, to give people some time, but I, I think we should require masks of all employees and all residents when they're on town property.
Matt, can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Trish.
Um, and I think that's an awesome idea. One of the things in, and again, you know, I, I consolidated these, all this stuff in the last two days, but I think what would be great is if Tony or whoever is in charge of that outside billboard from Town Hall, that, you know, like right now, you could have him put close to the public, but let's say next week, you make a different decision, or whenever you guys decide to maybe, you know, open partially, it, so that if, right now, they could see close to the public, and then if it changes, say next week, you might say, next week or the week after, or three weeks from now, um, open to public, a mask required and, and social distancing, so that then you, you guys can mark the floors, or Tony or whoever can mark the floors just like we're used to, and I don't know if this would work, I'm just tossing this out there. You know, like at some of the grocery stores, and even Home Depot, you have to go in one door and out the other door? We could almost do something like that, enter here, and exit the front door unless you can't do the stairs, and then you'd have to make an exception. But if we could at least put it on that billboard, so that people know ahead of time, you've got to have a mask because we don't supply them, and one of the questions, I don't think I said it, somebody said, do we have to supply them? And the answer was no, you just have, you can just say that in order to come in, you have to have one. So that's just a suggestion for however you want to handle this when you finally open.
Great idea.
You, Trish read my mind.
Seconded.
All right, so I do have a, so Diane, we're going to call that a motion on my part about the mask policy.
So anybody?
I second the motion.
Hold, hold on, everybody, let me repeat it. So, and granted, we're going to have a lot of other stuff to go with this, but let's just get the general motion out there. Starting, what would it be, May fourth, we're going to require all employees and town residents to wear masks when on town properties.
So before you go any further, you say all residents, I think you need to say public, otherwise somebody coming from East Kingston doesn't have to wear a mask.
Yeah, we're not, we're not allowing them in town anymore, did you hear that one?
Oh, no, I didn't.
But, but, but no, you're, you're absolutely right, that's a, that's a better term that, that everybody else is using. So let me back up. Starting May fourth, the town will require all employees and the public to wear masks while on town properties.
Perfect. And practice six-foot social distancing, right?
On or in?
I'm going to say on because, because we have a lot of town properties you can be on but not in.
Yep.
Aren't you going to add the social distancing?
I, you know, it's, I think social distancing is a good idea, but I'm not going to bite off too much there. Mr. Chair, can I say something? Could I get a second first?
You, just one thing, this doesn't matter, we may not open Monday, but this still should be in effect regardless, correct?
Right, with my thing, and I still don't have a second, can somebody give me a second?
Thank you for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Larry. So basically, what I, where I'm going with this is, if we don't open until August, this is still going to be transfer station, and anybody who comes into Eight Merrimack Road or whatever, right? But the, the idea is to have something in place tonight with notice given, right? So they're, they're going to have about five days' notice, and, you know, time to get people what they need, if they, employees what they need if they need it. And then, I want to make a motion now that would apply if we do reopen without having to redo it again. So with that having been said, Chief Elcudino was trying to get in there, Chief, what do you got?
You get, I, I might have misunderstood your motion. Uh, I, I believe you had said for residents and all employees. If that's going to be the case, then somebody needs to get several hundred masks for the fire department, so every time there's a call, the members wear a mask, respond into a call because they're on town property.
True.
And I would assume it'd be the same thing with Chief Jew.
They're not wearing masks, Chief?
We are, we, uh, we're following the EMS and everybody else's guidelines. The only time we wear masks, because there's not enough masks to go around, is when we go on EMS calls. If we go on a medical call, then before we enter the residence, we're suiting up. Other than that, this weekend, we had eight calls, half of them were from fires.
Wait a minute, let me just understand this, so when you guys are in the fire station, you're not masked?
Correct.
Correct, there's not, we don't have, for us to do that, Mr. Chair, then, there's not enough masks to go around, we do need-
How do we get, how do we get enough masks to go around Larry and Trish? Because I, I was not aware of this.
You're not going to get enough.
Yeah, we're putting in orders, orders every day, however, social distancing is being practiced really, like, unbelievably through the fire department and the police department. So you may have to adjust that, that motion, um, with the exception of first responders, I guess, because it's a whole different entity than it is with the public and the employees at Town Hall, the transfer station, or the-
Right, but what I just heard from the feedback you gave, Trish, and, and what I've been reading in the newspapers, other towns are doing what my motion just was, so what are the other towns doing that they have enough masks? What are we doing wrong?
So they're, they're applying it to municipal buildings and public buildings, but not in fire.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've been to a couple of fire departments, I have not seen one fire station unless they're in a gathering, in a group, and they cannot practice social distancing, wear masks. I mean, trust me, I, if that's the board's decision, that's the board's decision, I'll have to do a standing order that if you're responding to a call and you don't have a mask, go home, because you can't drive onto Eight Merrimack Road, if you do, you violate the board of selectmen's order. I could, I could see it turning-
Here's my thing, if, if we turn around and we, this is effective Monday, and everybody at the transfer station is wearing a mask, and we're not telling the police and fire that they have to wear masks, I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's a proper policy right there.
With all due respect, the transfer station has three individuals that are in a booth, they're not dealing with the general public, like the fire department is. We had three calls today, we dealt with a lot of people, and this is just fire, this is not even police and everything they deal with. We are a hundred percent in a different policy-
Right.
-on the public safety side than the transfer station. I guarantee you, the transfer station, every three to four hours, are not disinfecting their booths. I guarantee you, the transfer station are not taking the temperature every time they step, every time they enter or leave town property. I guarantee you, they're not logging in if they're coughing, they're sneezing, the, the whole checklist that public safety's doing. Again, I do not, if the board chooses for the masks, that's fine, Mr. Chair. What I'm saying is, I'm, anybody coming in and guys have to curtail responding because they don't have a mask, because we ran out of masks, which I just took, I believe Larry's last fifty masks, uh, Monday, I believe it was, because we ran out on the weekend. So we don't even have fifty masks, so I, I could tell you, I can't get them. So if Larry cannot get surgical masks, then we're out of business come Monday, May fourth.
Hey, this is Kate, can I say something?
Go ahead, Kate.
Municipal, public works, there are different categories, I mean, even with airline pilots, they are not subject to the same rules, so I think it would be completely appropriate to do municipal and public because EMS has actually held a much higher standard, one, two. Uh, I did give an emergency email, the number of that guy in Homeland that we got a while ago from the Sherman call, if you're really running out, I think I sent it to everybody. See if that works, if you run out. That guy?
He's on all our calls.
Uh, so even though he says, I'll get you one no matter what, oh, well, okay. And two, and three, just out of curiosity, when you guys go on calls that are not EMS calls, medical calls, are you finding that the citizens, the residents are practicing distancing, and are they wearing masks? For your safety, out of curiosity?
I will, uh, I'll speak for fire, that's a no. That's a no. I, I can tell you, again, from the fire department, every three to four hours, we're, we're still doing inspections, we're still doing inspections because houses need to close, and that was the agreement, uh, permits need to be, uh, taken care of, so we're still doing, you know what I mean, inspections. Do I wear, am I comfortable personally doing a house inspection or propane tank, keeping social distancing? Yes. Do I wear a surgical mask or an M95 mask when I deal with a patient? Yes. Do I wear a mask in the, as soon as I walk into the fire station? No. I don't wear them driving trucks, because it goes back to that thing, if you're driving them for a long time, you're not, you're not breathing right, you know what I mean? And again-
No, that's fine, I, I just wanted to make sure you guys are, you know, kept safe as possible.
Right, but from my half-
Charlie was trying to get in there, Charlie, did you have something?
Yep, I was. Okay, Matt, if this, if this passes, what you're saying is that anybody that comes into the transfer station to drop off their trash is going to have to be wearing a mask because they're on town property.
Yep.
I'm in favor of the Town Hall, I'm in favor of the library, and any person coming into one of our town buildings.
Buildings.
Buildings, leave, leave the land out of it. Uh, because you're really going to make a mess for the transfer station, I mean, they're going to have to turn around and tell everybody to leave. Also, I wanted to make-
People should be wearing masks.
Yeah, but, so, just real quick, and I'll let you finish, Charlie, is, my thought was, we're going to have a whole weekend to notice people, and then we'll have a sign before they come in, uh, but go ahead, you were going to finish?
Yeah, but, man, if they come to the gate, and they see that, or they look on the, on the news, and they don't have a mask, but they want to get rid of their trash, uh, you're going to have a lot of problems down there.
Right, that's why we give them, that's, but Charlie, this is the reality of what we're doing right now. I, I don't go out much, but when I go into the supermarket, everybody's wearing a mask. I, I went to a coffee shop today, everybody was wearing a mask. It's, we're not the first people on the planet to do this, but I-
But not everybody is wearing a mask, I want to do-
Absolutely, she's right, she's absolutely right.
I want to do Walmart, Walmart has the limit of X number of customers per square footage. They have, um, they, they did not have the requirement of a mask, and not all employees were even wearing masks.
You're right, she's right, and it's in, same thing in the grocery stores, same thing at the pet store, because I've gone to these places, and, and they're all doing the same thing.
So here's what I'll do.
Mostly, mostly, Matt, it's in and outdoors.
Yeah, here's what I'll do, um, I'm, because I, I, I find it hard to believe we're the only town that's, I actually think we're kind of late with this motion.
We are.
Um, because what I'm hearing is, every time I pick up the paper, some town is requiring all employees and public to wear masks on town property, but I'm going to retract my motion, because it sounds like there's not the support, nor is, do we have enough masks to go around, so it is what it is, I retract my motion.
There's definitely fifty percent of it.
Excuse me, listen, when, first of all, the idea is to protect the transfer station employees, which to me makes a lot of sense. Two, when I was on the Sherman call, and I sent it to everybody, all the towns around us, to make some transfer stations, they're very worried, will not take garbage unless people have the courtesy of wearing a mask. They can put a Halloween mask on, we don't have the idea to minimize risk, so I don't understand why we can't hold, give the respect to the transfer station they deserve when they're doing this job without extra pay. I mean, I think people, our town residents are very smart, and smart enough to find some way, my God, I went out with a, what is it, blanket bag over my head, doesn't matter what it is, to do that, I think it's a good habit to get into. Everyone else is doing it, I mean, why can't we hold up to standards of, I don't get it.
I think if you look around, you're going to find most of, uh, Kate, I think if you look around, you're going to find that most of the towns around here, I've got door-to-door pickup. They're not having the biggest problem with the-
The ones that have transfer stations, if you want me to get the information, all- The ones that have transfer stations, if you want me to get the information, I'll report back to next meeting. Transfer stations, the people who don't, are not admitted in, one, unless they have a mask and practice distancing to keep the people there safe. So I don't think that's unreasonable, given the pandemic, given the fact that we want to keep our numbers here low.
And I gotta be honest with you, Kate.
So I'm, I'm not in favor of that.
Kate, and I think what you should do is you should go down to the transfer station, and you be the one to tell these people that they can't come in when they don't have a mask, because they don't have cable TV to see it, and, and they have no other way to find out about that over the weekend. So you should be the one that goes down there and tells them not to come in.
Can we hear from Jack?
Okay, Larry had a good idea. Can we hear from Jack? Is Jack or Pete, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, how's it going down as far as distance?
Yeah, this is Jack. I, I, you know, just, Pete, are you there? I, I don't wanna interrupt.
I'm, yeah, yeah. I'm noticing probably at least half of the people, or more, are not wearing masks when they're coming in. Uh, people are still mingling in front of the compactors, talk, you know, it, it, it's hard to enforce because we get the same thing, you know, I pay taxes, I should be able to dump, and, and it, it's a tough, tough situation.
So I, I would say, I would say as long as our guys have the masks, they're gonna be protected. If the residents don't wanna apply, then let them take the chance of getting sick.
Yeah, but what about someone who wants to empty their trash safely and has a whole bunch of people without masks crowding them? It's just ridiculous. I don't think too wrong to make a right here. I think that this is a new world, and we have to practice safety and give townspeople time to learn how to do it, and just because they're gonna be difficult doesn't mean that it's not the correct thing to do for everyone's safety. I don't get it. But I'm not in agreement with you guys, but I'm clearly gonna get outvoted, just for the record.
So, so let me, uh, timeout everybody. So
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, we're, we're almost an hour into this meeting. I don't wanna rehash the same argument. So I've retracted my motion, uh, because it's quite obvious that not everybody's in my, my corner. Uh, so are there any other motions on this subject before we move on?
Well, why don't you make that motion, so it will pass?
Matt, I'd like to make, I'm, I'm, Matt, this is Jack Kozak. I, I agree with Pete, but we have a lot of people that, I, 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 it's obvious that they're very concerned when people next to them do not have a mask, and I kinda see them back out and so forth. I, I think you should go on with the motion. I agree with Kate a hundred percent. People have to go along with what we, what we need to do to protect people. Those people that have masks are very concerned. I watch them all the time, but there's several vehicles over there, and they want other people, they're, they're backing away. And I, I think it's a great idea to have everybody have masks.
All right, so here's the deal. My motion that I retracted, uh, had for all town properties, and the chief just told me we're not prepared uh, to do it on all town properties. So that is still a retracted motion.
But is it municipal and public? Wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
You've got, you're the lawyer, it's the good wording.
Right, but basically, my motion, what I'm being told is we don't have enough masks to go around to require it of all employees.
Right, that's why they said municipal. Wait, Trish, what was it, municipal and public, what's the wording?
Municipal and public properties.
Thank you.
Not, wasn't public safety properties, however.
Right. So how about making a motion that that might ring out?
If somebody wants to make, if somebody wants to make a motion, go ahead. Mine's off the table.
Can I, can I say something before a motion?
Yeah.
Sure.
What I'm curious about, we, everybody is waiting for what the governor's gonna say on Friday. I'm wondering if maybe we should wait, and although we were looking forward to not having a Friday meeting, maybe we should have a Friday night meeting after we see what the governor says.
So my only concern with waiting is, is we have, we have notice opportunity here.
Oh, no. Yeah, okay. All right.
We could, we could notice, we could start notifying people tomorrow that on May fourth, there would be a change. So for all the people who are going through the transfer station this weekend, or Thursday night, would find out, you know, we could have signs up. We could have the sign in front of the town hall. So if it doesn't take effect until May fourth, all those people, uh, will find out before they need to. And then the reality of it is, and I know people on the call aren't agreeing, so I don't know why I'm even saying this, but, but the reality of the thing is the world is changing. So if I go to the dump a week from Saturday, and I don't have my mask, I can scream all day that I pay taxes and I should be able to dump my trash, but the reality is, I need to turn around, I need to go home and get a mask. I probably, even though I'm not wearing it at the time, I probably already have one. I would say ninety percent of the people, at least, who leave the house have masks. So, but again, anybody wants to make a motion, go ahead, but I'm done with my motions.
I'm gonna make one. Unless Lisa wants to make it first. You can all say no. I make a motion that beginning May fourth, the public is required to wear a mask on public and municipal property for the safety of our residents and workers.
Sorry, Kate, this is Tina. Can I just interject something? I just had a, uh...
So we need a second. Hold on. I'll second for discussion. Tina, go ahead.
Um, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know the protocol. Um, I mean, just if, say, say the governor does say that everything can open up as of May fourth, I don't believe that at the local, the, you know, the governing body of the town has to do it as of the fourth. You know, you could then...
That is true. That is true. I think we all understand that, right?
Right. You could say, you know, okay, now that's lifted, we're gonna say as of the tenth, everybody has to wear a mask, if that's the way you want it.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, if, I mean, if, I thought I said it at the beginning of this whole field, but we are our own board. We, we could open in August if we wanted to, even if the rest of the state was open. Um, it's, all depends on what we do. So there is a motion and a second. And, um, I'm sorry, can somebody, can somebody read that motion again? I've forgotten it already.
I wrote, "I make a motion that beginning May fourth, the public is required to wear a mask on public and municipal property..." Oh, that's maybe not the right word. "...for the safety of our residents and workers on Newton."
That was a second by me. It's their further discussion.
So you gotta excuse the transition time.
If the wording needs help, let me know.
Okay, everybody's talking. Let's go with Diane. Go ahead.
The, right now, the only ones that have to wear masks are the public.
That's what she made a motion.
Help me with the wording, Ben. Yeah. That's why we'd like the lawyer to make the motion.
Did you want the employees... Did you want the employees to wear the mask as well?
I do, but I don't think anybody else does.
Certainly, if they're dealing with the public. No, if they're dealing with the public, they should for their safety. But this is, again, in public municipal, this is not including EMS and police, which is a whole different...
Okay.
What do you think?
Now, see, I'm in, I'm in favor with the town employees wearing the masks while open for business.
Yeah, me too. But I mean, if they're alone...
I'm in favor with the masks. I am not in favor of requiring masks on public property. When we leave an open-blanketed motion like that, we are saying, you cannot go into Greenie Park without a mask on. You cannot
Well, that's a good point.
go on to Bush Farm without a mask on. You cannot drive into a parking lot without a mask on.
Okay. So then, I rescind the motion, and I'm gonna change it. Okay, that would still work. "I make a motion that beginning May fourth, the public is required to wear a mask on Newton municipal properties for the safety of our residents and workers." Anyone wanna help me with wording? Lawyers, let me know, because I'm new at the motion.
So I'm seconding for discussion.
Wasn't that the same motion, though?
No, I got rid of public prop- no, I said municipal property. Isn't that different?
No.
No, that's no different. That wouldn't cover municipal property. It's any town land.
Here's, here's, can I, can I jump?
Yep.
Can I jump in here really quick? Okay?
Yes.
Because we're gonna go all night if we do it this way. I'm gonna poll the board, so I only wanna hear from board members. This is just a poll, okay? How many members of the board are in favor of requiring the public to wear masks in our buildings? Um, Charlie?
I am.
Are you talking in the building? Are you talking in the building?
I asked for Charlie, but... So... So we're gonna do this very simply. So if the public is in our buildings, are, who on the board, and these aren't motions, okay? I'm just trying to get us through this fast. So who on the board is in favor of requiring the public while they're in our buildings to wear masks?
I'm in favor.
Charlie is. How about Lisa?
I am in favor of that.
Kate is? And Larry?
Question, so that's not including the transfer station, then, because that's not a building?
This is just the public. This is just the public right now.
No, no, in the building, in the buildings, okay? That's not complicated.
This is not complicated. It's not the employees. It's not the employees, it's just the public.
But I think what Larry's asking is, if we hit the transfer station yet. So it's just the buildings, Larry, right?
Right, that's fine. I, I'm good, yeah.
So you still... Okay, okay. So now, we know we agree on that part of it. So now, uh, transfer station, how many people are in favor of requiring the public to wear masks at the transfer station?
Not in favor, but...
Okay, so Charlie's a no. Lisa?
Kate is a yes, in favor, obviously.
I am not in favor of it.
Okay, Larry?
I'm in favor, but if they show up without one, I would still not give them a hard time, let them dump their trash.
Yeah, see, I don't agree with that. Okay, so this one's not gonna fly, uh,
Yet.
basically, it's not gonna fly, I don't think, tonight. Um, as far as employees required to wear masks, where does the board stand on that?
I'm in favor of that, when they're dealing with the public.
Okay, and Kate?
Same.
Okay, Larry?
So if they're in their office by themselves, they don't need it, but if they're dealing with the public, yes, have one on.
Okay, Lisa?
I am in agreement with that one as well.
All right, I think we have what's called consensus with that one. So we're getting there. So let's make that a motion. So I would move to require all employees to wear masks while dealing with the public. Is there a second?
I will second.
Comment, anybody?
Is there gonna be a sec- okay, yes, but we're missing a piece.
Are there gonna be enough masks?
Well, um...
That is to anybody.
Yeah, 'cause we didn't specify what kind of masks.
Yeah, they can be the homemade ones.
This is true. Right, I don't wanna hear a... Yes, I wanna hear, uh, from... Yeah, Chief, please.
It, it, everything you guys are doing, absolutely no problem. But if you're gonna require the employees to wear the masks, then they should wear the proper mask. And a handkerchief over your face doesn't cut it. It's either a surgical mask or an M ninety-five mask. The homemade mask, we don't wear the homemade masks. And we have the opportunity, we had somebody who donated homemade masks that have the pouches inside, so if you see one of the guys with some of the homemade ones, they have the pouch inside to take the surgical mask. So I, I understand what the board is trying to do. I'm in favor of it, absolutely no problem. But if you're gonna require a town employee for safety, then you ought to require them to wear the proper mask, and not just a homemade mask that doesn't protect nothing, if you know what I mean.
Okay, and Trish, you had a comment?
No, that, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, that'll make sense to me.
Matt, this is Jack. I have a comment.
Jack?
I hear you asking the employees, but people that come into the transfer station, no, it doesn't make sense. I, I, I'm totally opposed. Is they're gonna have people coming to the transfer station, have them wear a mask?
So Jack, Jack, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're not there yet. I'm trying, I'm trying to build
Eric?
to what we have for consensus here. So that's a different subject.
Yeah, I understand.
But, yeah, um, so my question is still hanging out there. Will we have enough masks to make this a policy?
I might be getting five hundred tomorrow. I won't know till tomorrow.
Just as the first responders are cleaning their masks with different methods, which you, they're all over the internet, you see them in the news, can the town employees, if they're get Ninety-fives, do the same daily?
Pete, Kate, the masks...
Guys?
We went out and we purchased ten masks. Uh, I think they were almost eighty bucks a pop. You replace the filters.
The filters.
And you can, and, just the filters, and you can disinfect the mask. For ten masks, don't quote me, I think it was like twelve hundred bucks. The surgical masks, you can't clean, and the M Ninety-fives, once they get wet, they're no good. So you're, you're correct. There are certain masks that you can disinfect and clean and reuse, but unfortunately, the ones that the EOC has been able to get, uh, I don't believe those you can reuse. Those are disposables.
So if I could kinda summarize what we've...
I know hospital workers.
I could kinda summarize where we've been here in the last forty minutes, half hour. Uh, we can't get full agreement on most everything. And the one thing we can get agreement on, we can't guarantee we're gonna have enough masks to support. So I'm probably ready to adjourn this meeting.
What about making the motion? Well, what about just making, starting, just make three simple ones, right? First, a motion that beginning May fourth, the public is required to wear a mask in all town bill, buildings for the safety of the employees, period. And we don't specify. At least it gets people used to that. We can do a whole nother motion on Friday or Monday about, and discuss what the town employees' masks are. All over this state, no one is having enough of the great masks. That's why even nurses and such are not always wearing them. But at least we have to make sure they have something. Why don't we just break it down to three things, and then we can revisit the transfer station? It's just easier. Otherwise, we're not gonna get in there.
All right, so let's back up. Can, is, is that a motion, Kate?
I make a motion that beginning May fourth, the public is required to wear a mask in all town buildings for the safety of themselves and the employees, or however you wanna say it. Yes, that's a motion. Just that piece.
Anybody want a second?
Matt, your motion is still on the table.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm retract, retracting that motion. Thank you, Diane. So Larry was a, Larry was a second.
I was second. It, it's a good idea. Just put it out there, and you're gonna have some people to follow it, and some people won't, but at least we're getting some participation in it.
They'll get used to it.
All right, so, so, um...
Can I have that read back?
Yeah, please.
I make a motion that beginning May the fourth, the public is required to wear a mask in all uptown buildings excluding the fire and police station. Does that work?
No, no, they still have to wear it when they come visit the police and fire department.
Oh, oh, good, good. Sorry, you're right. We're only doing one aspect. Thank you. Yes, leave it.
Yeah, and it's public that we're talking about.
Right, we're just doing a public one for the public.
Okay, so Larry was a second. Larry was a second, and we're gonna go around the horn here. Lisa, how do you vote?
I gotta say one thing, Matt. I gotta, before you go
Go ahead, Larry, Charlie.
take it down the road. So you're telling us, and you're telling the public, that we're opening Monday?
No, that's not what we're saying.
Nope.
No.
Yes, it is.
No.
You're saying that anybody that comes to the town hall, that does business, has to be wearing a mask. The impression's gonna be that you opened.
Yeah, I don't agree, but, but we just have to have clarity. When, when the announcement is made, the clarity should be...
I'm not against this motion, Matt. I'm not against the motion, don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying, the people out there are gonna think that you're open.
Yeah, no, the, we would have to have clarity when we announce that, yeah.
So we'll make sure in the meeting minutes... Yes, so the meeting minutes can clearly state that does not mean that the town buildings are open May fourth.
So then the motion should be that all residents of the town, before coming into a town building, will have will have to be wearing a mask after the, after the date we open. Because other than that, no, they're going in.
But there are some, there are, there are some limited cases of people entering town buildings right now.
Right, you could say that a motion that beginning May fourth, the public is required to wear a mask in all town buildings when they are open for the safety of our residents and employees, period.
There you go.
How about that?
I have no problem with that.
So, I rescind my motion. Here's the new one. I make a motion that beginning May the fourth, the public is required to wear a mask in all town buildings when they are open, comma, for the safety of our residents and employees, period.
I'll second that.
And Charlie's a second. Let's go around. Lisa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
Aye, 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 aye.
Absolutely. Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Uh, and I'm an aye. Wow, um, so, uh, will, uh, Diane, you and I'll work on how, on the verbiage around that announcement, but the motion will be the policy, because it was unanimous.
I will email my verbiage, just to be safe.
Matt, if you can email that to me, we'll put that out on the alert now, too.
EOC, awesome.
Yeah, to the top.
All right, now, now, I hate to do this, okay?
Uh-oh.
Because it's getting late. But I totally agree with what Jack said.
Me too.
So, if, if we are requiring the public to wear masks, okay? We, or, I'm sorry, Jack, it was the other way around for you. Uh, forget what I said about Jack, we're reversing course here. Um, so, we just made a policy around the public. I would assume now, we're not gonna do anything around employees because we don't have enough masks. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Or-
Aren't we already requiring the transfer station employees to wear masks?
Right.
We're not, that's the purpose of this whole motion.
No, I thought we were. We, we were, I mean, that was when this first started.